Good morning, everyone, and I'd like to welcome you here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, May ninth of two thousand and twenty-three. Don Tranquer, Min Flavon, myself, Mike Stein, are your county supervisors. Lisa Smith is our county auditor, Viola is our IT director, Luann, our executive assistant, is back there taking care of us. And Mary is here from the Sentinel Press. And first on our agenda today is Jayden Chekler, Assistant Jackson County Engineer. Good morning.
Morning. So first up is a few driveway utility permits. First one is Spring Wind Stream on North Seventh Street. Just outside of Bellevue, there's going to be some direct boring, pretty standard stuff. The next two are Macokota Valley, and then go through those. I just didn't know. We just wanted to, we're going to recommend approval on all three, two, one. You were.
Well, we've done it both ways. I think we'll just separate them.
Wind stream by themselves.
All right, like I said, wind streams is just some direct buried fiber, so pretty standard stuff. We're recommending approvals on that for wind stream.
I will second that.
I have a motion to second to approve wind stream permit for underground boring. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay?
Motion carried. Next two are Macokota Valley. Other simple standard stuff, just some underground lines. And they have the both underground fiber lines, so recommending approval on those as well.
So we have one for Brandon Township and one for South Fork.
Correct, yep. The one in the Brandon Township is just the underground line to a feet odd building. And then the one in the South Fork Township is just an underground fiber parallel with First Hill Road.
No road danger or nothing.
Nope.
Make a motion to approve both of the Macokota Valleys.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second to approve Macokota Valley's permits for Brandon Township, section seventeen, and South Fork, sections twelve and thirteen, as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay? Motion carried.
Next up is a driveway entrance permit for Brian Steinas on Bellevue Cascade Road. Meet site distance. The travel Bellevue Cascade Road, it's right in the middle of the hill coming west out of Bellevue. So on site distance, I'm recommending approval on that. It's in the Bellevue Township.
And this is for a barn directly?
Correct, yep.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion to second to approve the entrance farm entrance permit to Brian Steinas in section fifteen, Bellevue Township, as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay? Motion carried.
Next up is, we were informed by Gary Severdin, longtime second row's employee, that he will be retiring this year, June second. Actually, to be exact. He's been here, started at Henry Port, nineteen ninety-three, so he's been here thirty years. And he's called it a career, so we are looking to, for you guys to accept Gary's retirement.
I'll make a motion to accept Gary's retirement. I can borrow his long time service to Jackson County.
Second.
I have a motion and a second with regrets, the retirement of Gary Severdin, possibly effective June second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay? Motion carried.
Because I would also like to thank Gary for his service for the last thirty years.
And do we send something as a board, or do you just do as department? Acknowledgement?
I will ask Todd on that, how he handles that.
Again, it's a lot of years of service and appreciate what he's done for the county. He's been a lead man for past several years and, and his. And the public relations also.
Anybody you talk to, I don't think has anything bad to say about him.
Well, I don't. We're going to.
Next up, last week, Todd sent everybody an email about DOT awarded us two million dollars to go towards the replacement of the Channelworth Bridge. He submitted some documents and it was on the DOT's list of their county bridge priority, or I should step back a minute. It is going to be under the county bridge construction loan, that's where the money is, the DOT is awarding the money from. And they have a spreadsheet that rates bridges. They call it the county bridge priority point rating worksheet, and it's factors. There's a lot of things that they, how they rate the bridges based on deep tour lane, cost of replacement, yada, yada, yada. There's a bunch of stuff. And I know he submitted some documents and I don't know, last week, that they will award us two million dollars to go towards the replacement of that bridge construction cost. So they want like an answer of our acceptance or rejection by this Friday, so that is why it's on the agenda for today. To, for you guys to accept or reject the two million dollars they are awarding us for that bridge replacement. We are obviously recommending the two million dollars.
Is there a timeframe on this one, it has to be done by?
Uh, that will probably be later stated in the funding agreement, so once, if this is approved or rejected, we send this to the DOT. And if it's approved, they will prepare a funding agreement that should state all the requirements, and I would assume yes, it's probably within three years, probably.
What does that do for our funding, if they're going to pull things back, and I guess is this on the five-year road plan, or does it need to be added to the five-year road plan?
This one is not on the five-year road plan. It's in our list of upcoming projects, you know, way down the pipeline. But I will ask Todd to see if it's a matter of, if it's fitting it in or adjusting, and see how it fits into my program.
And the extra funds, because I doubt it's only two million to replace the bridge.
Yeah, we would, so our estimated cost currently is five point seven, so that they still three point seven that we would have to come up with, and if there's other funding sources or uh, to talk to Todd.
Okay.
The first step would be to, I guess, recommending the acceptance of this two million dollars, and then after that, there'll be a funding agreement that the DOT will draft up.
And I'm sure it goes through the same process as far as letting in all that.
We've had a type's email that talked about that it would be a couple year process here to.
Yeah, this is probably said this federal thing involved too.
It's harder to turn down, oh. I don't want to call it a gift, but. I mean, we certainly have our share of lengthy spanning bridges across Macokota River, so it's nice that they recognize, I would say, and I really appreciate Todd pursuing that with other counties and getting into the pool and making that available to us anyway.
And I'm sure just this initial acceptance doesn't commit us to going through the project. Were we committed to go through it, or?
I would believe not. Once, once a funding agreement is drafted and signed, at that time, I would.
Okay. Some of these questions will get answered, so I move to approve we accepted award for the Channelworth Bridge on the second avenue.
I will second that.
I have a motion to second to approve the agreement with the Channelworth Bridge awarding grant as presented for two million dollars to the DOT. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose nay? Motion carried.
Next up is our bridge materials bidding documents. So last Friday, we opened bids for our steel and wood planking, two separate bid ones for the steel piling and the other one for our lumber. And Todd was not here yet, and he is not here today, so we're just recommending to table it till next week, because we'd just like Todd to have a chance to look it all over, because he hasn't looked at it yet. So.
Move to table till next week?
I will second that. Can we do that?
We have a motion and a second to table the bridge materials award until further investigation. All those in favor say aye. Till next week.
Next week, end of this hill.
We have it on our agenda next. All of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Motion carried.
Uh, nothing else on the agenda, but just want to go through some updates as far as construction projects that for this year. The Y sixty-one overlay, which is from Bellevue Cascade to City of Le Mans. We have been informed that next week, week of May fifteenth, River City paving will have a mill and prep crew in to cut some of the butt joints and prep some of the side roads. And then the week of the twenty-second is when they anticipate mainline paving of that. Good news, just wanted to give you an update on that.
Is there any further, I know we extensively patched that whole road a couple, two or three years ago. Is there any of them that have failed after that, that we need to pass prior, so they don't come through?
Yep, that's already taken place. That was probably a month. Chick Frye was in, at least a month ago, uh, doing some of that patchwork. There was a small number, but yeah, so they did take care of that. Lastly, just wanted to give an update on our retrieval process. We are just about done with all the roads out of the Macokota shop, so we, our hollow road is finished from Highway sixty-two to the intersection of eighty-first street. Thirty-fifth Street, also known as Codfish, is finished from the end of asphalt to the intersection of two hundred and eighty-eighth Avenue. And Thirteenth Street is also done from uh, city limits in Macokota all the way to Highway sixty-four. So up with the guys this morning, they're planning, there's about a half mile stretch yet of Seventeenth Street. Uh, that will be started and finished tomorrow, so then all the roads out of the Macokota shop will be finished. And then from there, they are going to move to the Iron Hill shop area and Baldwin, since some of the roads butt up to their district lines. They're going to kind of do it consecutively, I guess, or work in the Baldwin and Iron Hill shop. So.
Has it been received so far? The rain's going good.
Yeah, we've been out there checking the crown, one after they bring it in and just for retrieve the sides up, they bring it into the road shape that we've been checking that slope, that's anywhere between four to six percent with the subgrade material, I guess I would call it. And then replacing the rock that they need to, the quantity that they need to for the length to hit our tonnage per mile. They're hitting that right on, and it's turning out really well. I mean, you can visually even see the crown from the roads, and so we're getting we've had good luck here in the Macokota shop. We're getting at least five percent crown on average. There was a few calls about some driveways after we came through the retriever, and we informed them that yes, we're going to come back later and blend them, which they are blended now, which is at the time yet, at that time to do it, but brought our skid loader in and blended the driveways where there was the lip, and we got some thanks from the, those residents that called about that thanking, so all in all, I guess I can't complain about, I mean, there hasn't been many complaints at all other than that, so. All in also good night. Be interesting to see after this rain. There hasn't been any calls that come in that I know of yet, so. I guess.
It hasn't settled down quite good, too, would it?
Yeah, and you've explained to people it's going to take probably a month and a half for it to drive. What you would normally expect, it's going to be rough for a little bit till you get to settle and a few blading to help smooth it out, but we're heading in the right direction. I'm more than concerned.
I agree.
I drove them all. You guys slowed out a little bit.
I did have a couple comments, and you never drove them crowned roads. They're going to be crowned, I'm just telling you.
You better learn how to drive.
You two are going to get the water on the roads.
I used to drive flat roads.
Yeah, you don't want a taxi anymore, because they take you off the side of the road.
Soon to be doing that again.
That's right. And the guys have all been, you know, for being their first time as well, it's, I guess I couldn't ask for it to go any better.
Well, that's good to hear. You know, I was going to talk to some employees, never really had a chance down around that area, and so you have a dedicated crew. Um, and so they don't switch off, this crew stays with this project, so they're getting real accustomed to it and.
And it will change a little bit as we go to the different areas, you know, the graders. Because we're going to utilize the graders in the area that we're working in, but some of them are pulling from the adjacent area to help with it, but so for the Macokota shop, yes, it's been a relatively, uh, the same crew, but that's going to change as we go around. But that way, everybody gets accustomed to what we're doing and.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying. I know Todd had mentioned at first that you might have a dedicated crew that just goes around and does it. I appreciate the fact that we cross-trained and everybody get on board, as far as greater operators, how they're operating and creating each section there.
I did have somebody question, Jayden, maybe putting each of them, just wanting to answer them. So I understand the crown of the road and then our shoulders drop off a little steeper. But we're getting that lip in there where our shoulders are dropping off steeper, kind of even before it gets to the bottom of the ditches. Is that going to stay like that?
You're probably trying to like lift that you'll see at the, where we stop our shoulder and where it meets the ditch area.
Yeah, where they kind of cut that steeper part, and then they're getting a maybe a three to five inch lip there.
Yeah, I told them that they could, they were going to question, they were debating whether they could just take the retriever a little bit and kind of blend that in, or they could reach their blade out and do that, or even if it's as simple as driving the grader tire over, just to kind of smash it down. I see, I, I think I know, noticed probably a lot of codfish, I believe, right? That's where I noticed it too, and I think they were going to go and fix that once they had time, because they wanted to get everything when they open up with rocks, so. Yes, I have mentioned that to them, because there has been, okay, there's been one call on that, so, but at least that lip is in the ditch area too.
Range, you know.
Right, it's in the ditch. I mean, nobody should be in it, but.
But it is something you notice, maybe once the grass starts to get back established in our shoulder area, or from where we touch with the blade, it'll, that looks so exaggerated.
And that won't affect like, if it would stay there when we're winging, that won't affect?
No, it's all far enough into the ditch.
Okay.
And we guess that, so that was sediment, we get in there pretty quick with the retrieval process, and that would fill in pretty quickly.
And what caused that was a few times we went out there. We have the crown on our road, but you couldn't, there wasn't that break from the edge of road to the shoulder. So we want that water, once we get off the road, if we can, to shed it to the shoulder, get off, so we want that, like you said, we want that shoulder steeper, so that's what caused that, was to cut that shoulder down a little bit, and that is what created that lip.
Right. Okay.
All good news.
That's all I have. You guys have any questions?
Appreciate it.
Thank you much.
Are there any visitors or citizens that would like to approach or address the board this morning? Seeing or hearing none. Uh, Mr. John Keys is not here, correct? Uh, Mike and Bruce, would you like to address the board at this time? Good morning.
Good morning. It's going to be a monthly deal.
So, well, we have, you know, we received a bidding document specifications, uh, solar project document, and Lisa had brought up several, several concerns in this document, and this document actually wasn't addressed especially to us. This had conservation all over, then so it must have been the Hurstville project.
It was based on that, yes. But I mean, those, those edits on it, everybody must have got a feed through there.
And it talks about some of the stuff about inspections or onsite inspection. We're going to have, we don't have anything onsite here. We don't have a roof on.
No, no.
I know these dates are.
They, they may want to, you know, some of the folks may want to come out and take a look at just what the building is looking like and take, view the, the prints and such during their bids. Uh, those dates I kind of took out of thin air, and it was done a month ago, so everything's probably going to be backed up a month now at least. Um, but we want to respond to what timeframe you think is most appropriate, rather than just us projecting.
Um, I don't know that we know that. Uh, when, you know, unless Jeremy or John would come and get us an update of when the roof's starting to go on or something, you know, we asked specifically. I know you, and here we've had questions about site assessments should be scheduled with. Is, is that maintenance, or is that, is that the construction manager, or? We kind of had a loss here too on some of this.
Well, I know, I thought, I think they're getting some of the decking on. I know they got some of the roof rafters on and a little bit of the decking, but I don't know if that's, you got to wait till it's final sealed and.
No, I don't think so. In fact, you know, some of that might be modified a little bit. I would like to accept your critique, take a look at it, talk to our consultant, see what changes might be most appropriate at that point. Um, you know, we've got some time to get this moving, but probably not a lot of time. If we want to get this done in the third quarter and be eligible for that extra ten percent from the government, we, we want to move forward on it.
Talk to your consultant to see, because right now, the only way to see the roof is to stand on the ground and kind of look up.
Yeah, I don't think they need to see the roof. I, I don't think, I think everybody needs to see the plan as a private talk, like, you know, like what we've done with rock, basically. So I, I wouldn't be too concerned about that. I did do the research on the, the, how they affix it to the roof, and it is done with concrete waste, very commonly done.
So where are you hard at?
Yep, yep. Um, I have some bad news. We did not get the grant for the twenty-five thousand for the moonshot.
And we were almost guaranteed that, is that correct?
We were told it was pretty close to being a sure thing. Uh, the world's changed, and they are funding only two types of projects right now, schools and what they call equity projects, which are things that were reinforcing lower income assistance, basically. So we're out on that one. Then what they did was that, I didn't understand at the time, but they offered us, they have offered us that low interest bridge loan, it's kind of a consolation prize. It wasn't a pay-to-play thing. It was like, Eric, we, we're not going to give you this, but we could offer you that. I don't know if that money's available now either, because that was about three weeks ago, and we'll wait for a response on whether we should apply or not, but if we want that loan, which I think you're never going to beat it anywhere else in the world, you should be applying for it quickly, otherwise the money's going to be gone.
So, uh, this, this takes our responsibility for the project much, much different financially wise.
Well, maybe and maybe not.
Um, we have a lot of maybes going on here.
Well, I, the maybes can be concluded by just applying for these things. We need to apply for that ten thousand dollar, uh, direct community grant. Which, the lady told me we have a very good shot at, because we have an emergency feature within this building, and that's what they're funding right now. You get that grant, and you're under budget.
And I'm okay with that, you know, but then I, I, I guess when you first come in here, that you were going to apply for them and, and take the lead on that, correct?
I had wanted to, yes.
Okay. And again, there's, there's a few minor things in here. I mean, like, land energy is not coming to play and conservation in several places, so it has to be tweaked as well. Um, there was also a question on the internet connectivity to the array using shielded outdoor rating. Is that's our cost also, cat sex or something?
Well, the internet would be yours, would be your responsibility, right? But there's no additional investment. What you're wanting to do is to have the ability to connect from some control system through your panel to see how it's functioning. But there's no additional cost to that. You're going to have internet in the building anyway.
I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Or what is our, what is our process at this point?
See, this is on here, it says possible action on jail moonshot grant. Well, you just told us we didn't get it, so we can't act on that. I don't know if we can say, yeah, apply for that direct money.
The direct community loan, or the grant program, correct. That's that's the one that I'm happy to fill out, but I need financial data from the county to plug into that information. Uh, Lisa had mentioned there's somebody else that might be able to have that information for us, but I, I've not heard that.
Okay, so my question that I have on that is that before that the board would consider getting a loan, then I would need to talk to our bond counsel to make sure that we can get a loan, because we have, obviously, we have a voted debt on the law enforcement center, and I'm not sure, I would have to talk to our, our bonding counsel to make sure that we could do that. Can't guarantee that, because I've already sent him some other information, and he is thinking about if we can do that or not, so. Based on what the decision of the board is, will be what I, you know, if you want me to talk to bond counsel, if you're thinking about taking out the loan, then I would talk to our bond counsel first to see if we can do that.
The loan is one thing.
The one is a grant, though, right?
The one is the grant.
Yeah, I was not talking about the loan.
The grant, we could go ahead and apply.
Can you get them the financial or see what financial information he needs to fill out the grant?
We just give them our audit, our completed audit. I'm sure that's what you need, is our completed audit.
Perhaps, there's just a lot of data points on there, and if it's included in your audit, then it might very well be the case.
We would be more than happy to give you the information that we need.
And I need your access. I need to be representing the county if I'm going to fill it out, so I need some access. We can talk about the details.
On what, what access are you talking about?
There's a kind of a user identity that you have to establish in applying to show that you're a legitimate accounting entity. And I'm not going to be able to do that from my email address. That's going to have to be done through the county, you know, process at some point.
Well, I can't get a little address.
Yeah.
I don't, I need, we need to establish an ID.
Yeah, an account.
Yeah, and I need to have someone from the county to establish that account. I'm not a county employee.
So when we did it for conservation, how did we do it? At the Hertz, at the interpretive center?
Well, they didn't apply for this grant, so I, and they didn't apply for any grants, really, really.
I, I guess the one thing I'd like to see is, two things from you, Lisa, is could you talk to bond counsel about the loan and to see how that, if we can, with our bonding with the jail and all that stuff, if we can do that. And two, can you look into this grant to see what it would take and maybe establish an account, maybe instead of doing, you doing it? You know.
Maybe we can have somebody in house.
You know.
If you get them, I'll leave.
Yeah. Is, is it such a thing that the board itself can represent or be the?
He's looking at somebody that sits down and establishes the username and password to create an account.
That's all we need.
To put this stuff in. And, you know, honestly, as not being a county employee or whatever, it would be better if it was somebody, you know. Um, and then you, they can work with you to make sure it's plugged in and see how it goes.
That'd be the ideal scenario, and I'd be right at your right hand and do anything you need me to do. Uh, but there are certain things that the county needs to do, a county employee needs to do.
Okay.
And I would say the grant is the priority. Uh, well, I'm talking more grant priority than that loan, if I, if I'm thinking that the right way. I feel that we have, it would be a good investment for the county. Um, a good payback investment. So somehow I believe there should be an exchange from either whether it be from the county farm funds that maybe we could, um, use some of that rather than take a loan, which would make more sense to me. If we have the funds available.
You bet.
This is like an investment. I mean, this is a payback, so I mean, if it's a six, seven year payback, it makes sense to me. I mean, we've used it for other projects. It, it's re, it gives us a nice cushion somewhat. And, and sometimes in times of need, for projects that will basically pay for themselves. So, uh, I would rather look that way maybe than to take a loan, so I'm looking, I'm looking more for where can we get some help funding this thing?
Absolutely.
Is that okay, Lisa?
Yes. Um, what's the timeframe for the RFP for bidding?
I think we ought to get it out in June.
So can the board set up some timeframe here so we can put that into the RFP?
I forgot it.
So, you know, one of the things you have in here, that there's a private, you're opening. Why?
I'm just taking what was used as a draft for Hurstville. Okay, I, this is nothing that, that has a rationale that I derive, strictly a blueprint that was used at Hurstville that I've adopted. I tried to make most of it.
Would that be, Lisa, because maybe it went through their friends and that was that, no?
I, I just, I really questioned that.
I see you have that circle here.
Particularly for that.
No, it's not right. It's certainly public and, yeah, so I guess.
The other thing is that we need to make sure that we have insurance requirements on this.
Yeah.
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 Which wasn't done.
And again, some of it is just typo stuff, you know, as far as. And again, some of it is just typo stuff, you know, as far as lo- location address, um. Jackson County, of course, and said, uh, Jackson County Conservation and, and then E U instead of Alliant. But it's minor changes, I guess, would it be, um, okay if you went over these final, minor details with him when we talked about the grant and?
Yeah.
What's your concerns with that?
Yeah.
Are you comfortable, you guys, and if you want to look at it?
So we set up, so what you're telling me is that we can set up some dates for, um, get to, to plug some dates into this RFP.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And for the grant.
I guess, you know, let's get this kind of finalize the date so we can know when we get with the RFP out. Get whatever we need done, so we can get the grant moving. Then at least ask the question of bond counsel. I know we might not want to take a loan out, but at least we can get that answered.
No.
If it's even a possibility or.
Sure.
And if we can get this done maybe by next week or something, we could.
That may not happen. Yeah. So you would like to open the bids during open session on a Tuesday?
I would think that would make sense, right?
Okay, so we can do that. Um. What does it mean for contract negotiation with the winning bidder? What does that mean?
I would assume that af- after you accept the proposal, you're going to talk about start dates and do all the kinds of things you do when managing a project.
Okay.
I, I would encourage you to have your attorney look at this. I think that's the person you should be asking these questions for. Cause I'm not a contractor.
He has looked at it.
Okay, good.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Great.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, I, I think that we're getting confused here. All we're trying to do is help.
Yeah, no, no, we understand.
I understand. I just need to make sure that we've done our eyes and.
Well, to me, this, I think you and Bruce would, yeah, I haven't seen, even, but, uh. You and Bruce can get together and go through it line by line and, and the more people that look at it before we put it out, it's better.
Okay, that's fine. As long as personnel take a look at it, we'll plug some dates in, we'll change a few things and.
And then.
By John.
Approved by John, yeah.
Yep. Okay, we can do that.
Right. Do you want to pick a date now or?
Why don't you stop and talk to Lisa?
Okay.
Uh, yes, yes.
See what works.
This afternoon.
She can look at her schedule and.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Um, and we'll, we'll work something out.
Figure that grant out, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll move on now as quick as we can.
All right. Uh, any other discussion there? That was it.
Thank you very much for.
Thanks, guys, for helping us out. For showing it. We'd like to see it, but it's got to be, got to be feasible for us and, and justified, you know?
Exactly. But, thanks, all right.
Thanks, guys. So.
Sounds great, thank you.
Uh, Luann?
Yes.
Would you actually try to get a vote Marty's CD available during John's presentation? Andrew, could we, uh, are you prepared? Are you ready for us?
Yeah, or if John, if John's ready, I can go with John too, it doesn't matter, whatever you prefer.
Well, John, are you in a hurry? Okay, then I'd, I'd like to have Marty present for discussion.
Yes.
On that.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you? Joining us is Andrew Long, our Jackson County Jail Administrator.
Morning.
Good morning.
So, uh, this week is National Correctional Officer Week. Um, it started back, I want to say the eighties by Ronald Reagan, uh, kind of acknowledge the contributions of correctional officers, um. And what they do. Uh, sometimes it's a job that can be very underappreciated if you don't quite understand exactly what it entails. Um, you know, gone are the days of adult babysitting. Uh, as far as jail is concerned, it's a lot more professional environment. Um, a lot more is done now than ever used to be, a lot more training goes into it. Um, Delbert Longley was here. Let's say two weeks ago doing our jail inspection. Um, he was very complimentary of how our operations are working and the training that we're doing with our staff. So I just, uh, would request this proclamation, um, to honor the correctional officers that we have currently working for Jackson County.
I completely agree with you that they're probably underrated. Um, and don't get the recognition because they're behind the scenes, they're not out front, uh, traveling the streets, of course. Uh, but they're dealing with a atmosphere and a situation where it's not really enjoyable sometimes, I should say.
That'd be true.
So I, I completely agree with you and I would, uh, would you like to read that proclamation?
Oh, I don't care if you want me to or if you want to, it's up to you.
Up to you.
If you want to, go ahead.
All right, so this is a proclamation for the National Correctional Officers and Employees Week of May seventh to the thirteenth of twenty twenty-three. Whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week is an opportunity to honor, praise, and recognize all the men and women. Serving in corrections and whereas on the first Saturday in May of nineteen eighty-four. President Ronald Reagan issued a proclamation calling upon all counties to pay tribute to correctional professionals. This proclamation created a week of commemoration of work done by correctional officers. And honored many felt was long overdue and whereas in May fifth nineteen eighty-four proclamation. President Ronald Reagan stated, the professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by these officers throughout the performance. Of these demanding and often conflicting roles deserve our utmost respect. The important work of correctional officers often does not receive the recognition from the public it deserves. It is appropriate that we honor the many contributions and accomplishments of these men and women. For a vital component of the field of corrections and whereas correctional officers play a vital role in Jackson County. Law enforcement and are dedicated to safeguarding residents in Jackson County and ensuring public safety on a daily basis. All of the men and women who serve put their lives on the line and perform very difficult tasks that can be dangerous as well as frustrating. And whereas correctional officers are responsible for supervising inmate conduct and behavior to maintain security within the facility. While promoting positive actions, attitudes, and skills within the inmate population in order to reduce. Reducing and promote successful reentry into the community. And whereas the correctional officers strive to maintain a safe working and living environment inside the facility. Often in face of significant challenges and dangers. And our community recognizes the important work and sacrifices that correctional officers make every day to protect the citizens of Jackson County. And whereas Jackson County's correctional officers have shown great dedication to training and development. Many of Jackson County's correctional officers have completed advanced training and instructor level certifications. In areas including classroom instruction, TASER, OC, pepper ball, first aid, CPR, AED. ASP, baton, de-escalation, crisis intervention, toxic negotiation. Drug abuse recognition, recognition and law enforcement leadership and supervision. Now and therefore, I, Mike Sinis, Chair of the Jackson County Board of Supervisors. Do hereby proclaim May seventh to thirteenth, twenty twenty-three to be National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. And Jackson County encourage all citizens to join in honoring and recognizing our detention officers and employees. Jackson County encourages you to initiate, support, support and embrace new ways of honoring these. Critical public servants as they perform their duties every day in challenging situations. We dedicate these seven days annually to recognize these great public servants. But we should not hesitate to make every day an opportunity to honor, praise, and cherish all the brave, brave men and women in corrections. And witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of Jackson County be affixed this ninth day of May twenty twenty-three. Thank you all for your service and your dedication to your job and, uh, serving the public.
Thank you very much.
Uh, we need, uh, yes, action on making it.
I will second that.
I motion a second to approve, um, May seventh to the thirteenth as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye, opposed aye?
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion carried. Thank you, Andrew.
Yep, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Um, John, are you available, sir? You're joining me, John Keyes, our Jackson County Attorney. Good morning.
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 Great work. Well, uh, folks, what I'm, what I'm requesting today here is, I guess, sort of a, a head nod or approval. Uh, to, to go forward with the security upgrade in my attorney's office. Just as a quick recap. Um, what we're going to do, uh, is install, um, a locking solenoid on the front door, so that would be locked. And, uh, our office manager would be able to buzz people in and out what's like they have in the sheriff's office. I think we can do that. Uh, for a little cost. The, the thing that will require some cost and, and of course, the reason I'm here today is we have estimates on the security window. Um, I think the estimate here is four by four, it's a level three ballistic class. And, uh, we have three estimates. The lowest one by sheets.
Uh, so I would, before we disclose estimates, I would like to know if this was. Put out as an RFP? And everybody bid the same, um, process?
It was not. Uh, what we did was I solicited, uh, bids from people. Cause it was such a unique thing and there were only a couple of people that we thought could handle this kind of work. And also because I thought the time was of the essence because of the security issue. What I did was I actually had these people come in, look at the project. And I asked them, could you do the work and install for how much? Okay, and so that's how these bids were arrived at.
Uh, Marty, were you involved in that process?
I showed the person it.
So you, you know.
I showed two of the, the peop- the bids persons the job, what he wanted, yes.
Okay, so I guess I have a question. There's two parts to this, correct? So not only the access window. For the public to use, but also opening the, between the, uh, be it a conference room and, uh, your ma- office managers. Office, correct?
Yes.
So is that being done by maintenance or is that part of the bid?
We can do that. I, we plugged that window back in the day.
Okay.
I, I do believe that the frame and everything is still in the wall. We just put sheet rock. Put a wooden frame sheet rock and, and muddied it smooth.
And you think the glass is in there also?
I don't know if there was glass there.
Yes, there was glass there.
Oh.
Yes, there was glass there, because they always call, when Brian Bolt was in there, they called it the fishbowl.
So, whatever that means, but.
It looked like.
Do you intend to have glass back in or just bring it open so that it's accessible so she can see, uh, the front door, be it, uh?
Well, I guess we'll, we'll look if the glass is there, we'll see how that looks.
But your intentions was not to have glass in, in between there.
I didn't think there was glass in there.
No, but I mean, your intentions now was not to have glass.
Right, right.
Okay, so, um, Marty, you had a chance to look over the bids, if you will. Is this standard, is this, uh, efficient or this is our way of doing this or we're legal by doing this, correct?
Yeah, do we not have to open it up to the RFP?
I was told by Becky Chapin that we should, uh, do that. What I thought we were doing was just getting an estimate. To see where it was going to be allowed. Yeah, yeah. It, whether, you know, if it was, you know, four thousand dollar or if it was fifty, that's what I thought we were doing.
So these, these actual estimates that we had are completely confidential at this point.
I would think, and I, I have been, was told by two of the contractors. If, if that's what we're doing, they didn't want their name mentioned on it.
Correct.
I don't see the modulator for the door included in this. It's not, okay. I think we can do that in-house.
So if our justified process is to send it out for our RFP and get legitimate bids and open them here. Is there a timeframe constraint to that? I mean, I know we've been talking about it for. I mean, I think that can be done fairly quickly because of the fact that we've already have contacted several contractors to give estimates. If you will.
We can certainly do that, sure. It's always a better process to do competitive bidding. And it, it's certainly a more transparent process, so, yeah, I completely understand that.
Okay, so. Marty, can you get, can you write up the, uh, RFP or can you get together with Becky or John and write up an RFP and get it out to whoever it may be?
I certainly can, yes.
Is.
Sounds good to me.
The board?
I think that's. An appropriate way to go.
Becky has helped me on several projects that we've done to, to do, do that.
To send them out.
Yeah.
That way everybody knows.
Mike in here because they do a lot of that.
Yeah, I, yeah, that's.
Well, it might help us a lot.
The estimates, I guess, if you will, and, and of course, each one's worded a little different than. You know, what they're going to do and what the process is. I think we need to set it in stone that this is what's going to happen.
Yeah, because I looked over a couple of them and, and the one guy says it's in the north and south wall and we actually want it in the east and west wall.
Correct.
So we made sure that everybody is in, even though we showed, everybody that put a bid in, we did show them what we wanted or what John wants.
It's to the wall of the hallway, isn't it?
Yes.
Right.
That would be the north.
It's east and west.
It's east and west.
The wall runs east and west, but the.
Yes, yes, but in that, in the one quote, he said the east, the north and south wall. You know, and which it could be put in the north and south wall, but then it would be right in the way of the court people sitting there in the, in the.
Travel, more traveling portion.
Correct, correct.
I think we need an RFP and it all spelled out.
Spelled out, make sure they got the.
I think that's the best way to do it.
Excellent. We will, uh, we'll proceed. Thank you.
That'd be great. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Are you, are you prepared to come back? Is that the case or what, what's your situation, Marty?
Uh, whatever you want. I don't have.
It's up to Lisa?
Yeah, I mean, if you don't have, you need to get stuff.
Well, not really, because I've, I've, I've really been working on them rooms. It's about all I've done and I've been taking vacation. You know?
Well, they had weather, yeah, wasn't it?
I just had some other stuff had, getting taken care of, um. Couple things I want to tell you about is I, I've been working on the two, the women's restrooms toilets, because when you flush it. Right when it goes to shut off, it makes a noise. And I called the supplier that I get them from, he called, he gave me a number to call. The tech for the Royal, whatever flush they are. He told me to bend the fins out and I've done that several times and I can't get him to quit making noise. So I called Joel Woods, I sent him a picture of what we got, the diaphragms that we got, and he's going to come in and look at him himself. I have a, uh, a flushometer in the jail that every three months it just decides it don't want to flush. Then we go over and take it apart, put it back in, and then it worked for three months. I don't know what's wrong with it. So I'm going to have him look at all them. Other than that, like I said, I've been, I, we picked the, uh, what do you call it, like a computer box? What is that thing?
Yeah.
Picked it up, we put new carpet in, um, Justin Sellar, I think did an awesome job putting it in, looks really nice. Um, we're, the baseboard wasn't here, but it'll come Wednesday, uh, he'll put that in. Uh, the desk are in, uh, we're doing little modifications to the desk to get the plug in so they can put more than they want. And we got to hang the, excuse me, the upper cabinets. Um, but, uh, I'm working on that right now.
Okay, I, I guess we, I met you in the hall this morning, uh, was nice to run into you at that certain spot. So we have several items in our, in our, uh, breezeway or vestibule, if you want to call it, uh, used to be the main door.
Yes.
And we talked about several of them items and I think we addressed most of them where they're going and that we can, um. Dispose of some of them and, and there's many of them are spoken for, so. We wanna clean that area up. The other question that comes before me, that I want the board to discuss, is that display cabinet that would be in front of a new. The new office for.
The new HR office, I would call it.
Yeah, I, my own opinion, it's just my opinion, that it would limit visibility and access to that office, and. The cabinet is empty. We can certainly move it over to that area. To the north, I would call it, and actually put something in it, so people can see it, maybe, you know.
When you talk to the north, if I'm right, you said where the pop machine is.
And we can take.
Out in that entryway.
Yeah.
I guess we can take a look at it, where we might wanna put it. My question is, do you think it should be moved?
Well, my question is. What about the other?
Well, there was some discussion with that too, maybe name them all out there.
It would be, it would make it a lot more appealing to the people passing by to look in and see display cabinets and some stuff.
You don't think, you don't think the stuff we're storing around?
Quite appealing.
Just so you know, we usually store stuff there for a week or so, maybe while we're doing something, but this has been there for six, eight months.
Yeah.
And it's time, I think it's time, because other than about four pieces of equipment there, nobody's gonna want the rest of that stuff, right? Because it's been set there for, for the taking, and nobody has wanted it. The desk is the old magistrate's desk. I, I, I think I told you guys this morning that I will contact secondary roads, because sometimes they take them. Like them desks for their sheds, because they don't have desks. And I will do that, but the, like, the old. Frame that we made for the treasurer's office, we took it out, nobody's gonna use that. We may take it apart and keep the plexiglass, because it's got some good sized.
I mean, what would you normally do with it? You wouldn't store it there.
What, that?
Any of that, most of that.
Well, what?
There's a loveseat I call it there. Where'd the loveseat come from?
Come from the hospital. And I think Lisa's involved for this. Usually we store it down in one of her balls down there for about six years, then we finally throw it away.
Let's not take it to the cemetery.
No, I would say some of that metal that it, it doesn't really have a use or something, you know, take it over to the historical society, get the trailer.
What we do now is take it to junkie and have him build the, or give the check to them.
Okay, we don't have to move it twice.
Right, otherwise, because some of the stuff is really heavy and.
But yeah, if you can store the plexiglass, that could possibly be used someplace.
Yeah, I would take that, but the rest of it's just wood.
Okay, so just, if we can make a decision on the one display case, because she would like to know where she would mount her. Rack, if you will, where their forms in and such outside, which is gonna make a difference. If that display case gets moved or not.
I think move it.
I would say yes, move it. I also would like to see if we could.
Move all of them.
Yes, all out there, make that look like a nice area.
We may have to move the plaque that tells who built, who was the supervisors back in the day that built, but we can relocate that easily.
Because even if we coordinated with, like, the historical society, or somebody to put things in that display case, I mean. They have things in storage, I mean, you know, there's a lot of things we could come in there that.
I mean, there's students.
We used to do school art projects in there, I know.
Yeah, back in the day, it was four all the time.
Well, right now, it's not visible at all with the, with the Kia right there, so.
Ice cabinets.
I would agree. So I would.
Don't they get a start department one? I don't, I don't remember.
My question was, when they're supposed to be finished? I think it's in July.
I think it has to be done by July first.
June fifteenth.
June fifteenth.
Okay, so you've got like three weeks?
This is the deal, when I get done, I, I will call them. I know a week or so ago, he was out there with Steve Plucky, looking at it.
I see some markings on it.
Yeah, I think Mike's, or the engineer does that for it. I will touch base with him, and then I'll, I'll let you guys know.
Okay.
But he knows that it's. It has to be done by then.
Yeah, I just, we, we approved it a while ago, and it's just been kinda.
Hanging there, yeah.
Hanging there.
I would remind you.
I will do that. I'll tell him that you guys are curious, we wanna make sure we get it done.
Yep, I would make arrangements to move the one cabinet, and then come up with a plan for the rest of them, if you would.
Okay, and when you say move it, are we gonna put it where the pop machine is, right?
We'll, we'll decide where we're gonna move it.
So you just want me to take it out and, and put it in the north lobby for now, set it there?
Well, I would.
Get rid of that other stuff. You gotta get rid of these four things to put it over there.
Okay.
Move that, get rid of that, because we're not using that pop machine.
No, it, it just never worked, did it? Was that the case? I don't know. It just all, one day, one day, the pop was gone out of it.
That's correct.
Okay.
So let's get rid of that pop machine and put that.
And it was given to us.
This number, give the John keys for that printer and see if he can use it.
I will. I will.
You're gonna have to go put it in his office.
Okay.
And if he looks at it and doesn't want it. Can we, or he waste it?
Yeah.
Because it's like fifty, Mike told me it's at least fifteen years old. All right?
So they, they disposed of it because it was not useful for them anymore, it was outdated. And then it went to GIS, which I don't know that they ever did get it running, did they?
Certainly had to, but I don't know unless they printed it on.
The, this is what the, the treasurer's office told me, when they got it working, the prints weren't any bigger. That much bigger than what they could do off of the copy machine or something.
I'm sure things have changed since then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, yes, make it go away.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, have a great day.
You too.
Yes. Sorry about that, Lisa?
No, it's okay. Actually, George Jordy and Elaine Edwards are here from the Pioneer Cemetery Commission. And it was on my agenda today to. Talk about the access easement, but since they're here, there's no sense in me doing it.
And would you like to come forward, George?
Sure.
Elaine, is spirit on you?
She was just here for a signature. Good morning.
Good morning.
Bud Cemetery.
I'm sorry, George.
What do you do in the cemetery, if the shelf or public, if there's anybody?
George Jordy, Chairperson of the Pioneer Cemetery Commission.
Thank you.
So we're here regarding the Bud Cemetery easement. To negotiate with the landowner, we had originally set the. Property stakes at point four or five acres for that cemetery. And we have an easement that's, you know, maybe a quarter of a mile from the highway. And. So in order to get the, the landowner came back and reset the, the. Stakes at point four one acres, so it's like four tenths of an acre difference. We had set them out of ways so that we have, you know, see. You know, a, a very good access around the stones. We still have five to eight feet on outside of the stones between that, where we will put the fence. So we think the point four one acres is adequate. And we wanted to use that as a negotiating tool to get the easement, which we waited two years to get, so. The landowner has signed the easement, and we're in agreement. We voted at the commission meeting in February to. Agree to the point four one acres if we could get the easement signed. So we're at that junction now. He's signed it, sent it, and I assume Lisa has the original. Which, which means supervisor's approval. And signature.
Okay, and you're asking for what right now, then?
So if you agree with that, I need a motion to approve and authorize the chair signature on the access easement agreement between Next Trajectory LLC and Jackson County. For a property known as Bud Cemetery.
And has their county attorney reviewed?
I can't answer yes or no, because my, the information that I got was from Sarah Davenport. So I'm, I don't know if Sarah had talked to John, I, I don't know that.
And Sarah was representing the Pioneer Cemetery Committee, and, and she said it was all on the open up.
Yes.
Okay.
And I gave copies to you this morning on your desk, so you have a copy of the.
It's prepared by Sarah Davenport. I move to approve.
Do we need to have John look at it, though?
I don't think they're not, I can't answer that.
I think. No, but we also agreed that they could get private, get counsel to do this, because John stated at that time, he did not have the. Time, or at that time, he didn't have an assistant, he didn't have the. Time or the energy or whatever to pursue it, and Sarah has been working on it for, like you said, several years. And knew the ins and outs of it. I guess private counsel had agreed to it. To me, that would be sufficient, but that's up to.
Okay.
That's not up to me, it's up to the board. So I have a motion.
I would second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the excess agreement, easement agreement as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried. Is this the original?
No.
Anything else, George?
Not at this point.
Update? That you'd like to throw at us?
We have a lot of small projects that we're gonna be doing.
Well, will, will you proceed with the fencing of that property too, then you said? Is that correct?
Yes, that's the, that was one of our issues, we wanted to get this signed, so that we would be authorized to go ahead and do the fencing.
Makes sense.
We're planning to put a. Barbed wire fence around it, a couple gates, so we can be able to drive into the cemetery. And there's room on the west side. Do you come up from the easement to drive directly into the cemetery for a gate?
Okay, hopefully, you respect. Conditions, because I know that's quite an easement.
Yes, it's down a grass swale, and. We had to agree within the easement, if we caused damage to it, that we would potentially repair that, so. I, I don't, you know, we've spent some time in there the last couple of years restoring that cemetery, and. We did not have an issue with it.
No, and I, and I, I expect that you're working with the, with the tenant also, which had been really agreeable to this whole process. I've talked to him several times, and. He's been just, you know, agreeable to letting you in there and do whatever, yeah.
Yes, the tenant has been easier to deal with than.
Well, I, I don't know that it's easier, it's just he's more accessible.
Yes.
You know, the, the landowner has got many projects on, in the, in the fire, so, yeah, appreciate you touching base with the, with the tenant, so.
Okay.
Yep, thanks, George. Okay, Lisa?
This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the May second, twenty twenty-three board proceeding, as written by Auditor Smith, and authorize publication in the official newspaper.
So.
I will second that.
Motion to second to approve the May second, twenty twenty-three board proceeding, they're written. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of five hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the claims as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
And just with that, you know, there's quite a few for the jail that were in there, that's why the number was. What it was, about half of it was jail expenses, if I read it right.
Yes. Motion in to approve invoices for seventeen thousand, thirty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, Inc. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents to Bill Bruce Builders. One hundred and twenty dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty, Inc., for a total cost of two hundred and forty-three thousand, thirty dollars and four cents. With no funds being paid from the American Rescue Funds, and authorize the chair signature on the project cost recap for the Law Enforcement Center for the month ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the invoices as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve invoices for five thousand and seven dollars and thirty-four cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, Inc. Fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-three cents to Crawford Company. Six thousand to S.A. Architects. One hundred and seventy thousand to Tri-State Porta Potty, Inc.
You said one hundred and seventy thousand?
Oh, one hundred and seventy thousand. Seventy dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty, Inc. One hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and forty dollars to Advanced Precast Company. For a total cost of two hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-seven cents, and authorize the chair signature on the project cost recap for the Jackson County Fair and ISU Extension. The Four H Outreach Center for the month ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
This seems petty, but do we know why we're getting charged two different amounts for the porta potties?
I don't know.
Are they have the same number quarters on them?
I don't know why the fair would have more than jail.
I would almost guess you would have to touch base with Tri-State Porta Potty. And. It, it's exciting to see some progress being made there.
Yes, I do.
Got a wall or two. Move to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the invoices to Midwest Construction Consultant as presented for the Jackson County Fair and ISU Extension building. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
And we are getting down to the end of the fiscal year, so in looking at some of the budgets. This afternoon, I need a motion to approve setting a public hearing date for a fiscal year budget amendment. On May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, at ten a.m.
Shelley gave us a list of things that are gonna need to be amended?
Yes.
Can we just make sure this is it, or, or we wouldn't expect any surprise ones in June?
The only one that I could maybe anticipate would be secondary roads. You know, I mean, it all depends now with.
I know at one time.
And that's in this.
Okay, he has spoken, I said, you need to talk to Shelley.
And that is, and that is in.
Okay.
There are some situations that we need to track before the end of the year, and that's why it's.
So this is set in the public hearing.
It's just the date, we'll have the hearing on the May thirtieth.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the public hearing date on budget amendment on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, ten a.m. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you. Go in. Good morning.
Good morning. All right, calendar for this week. This afternoon, it's four o'clock. Excuse me, is the Broken River Watershed Management Authorities Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for NIN? Tomorrow, Wednesday, May tenth, at nine a.m., then we'll be on the Just Talk Show on KAVQ. Thursday, May eleventh, at one P.M., is the Grant Wood City Byway meeting in Anamosa for NIN. And at four o'clock that afternoon is the Jackson County Area Tourism Association's annual meeting in Saint Donatus. And if you haven't RSVP'd already, either do so, or let me know to RSVP for you, and if you're bringing. Your significant other, if you guys talk about it.
I do have a other commitment, so I will not be, I think I sent the email.
Yeah. Okay, Friday morning, eleven o'clock, tentatively, there's an Isaacs update by Zoom for Mike.
Yeah.
They, they canceled it.
My guess is it's over, so. Update coming. We had, we had session last Thursday at Fort Dodge, that we would kinda went over everything that got dropped, and. So you agreed that, I mean, we have the, I mean, we have to make the legislation update, so it's basically the. EMA, a legislation got dropped. What else was there on the agenda?
Digestion of the tax bill was passed.
Uh, the tax? Uh, passed, I believe.
I know it passed, but just. Is there any tweaking, or? The auditors, they have their new list of things they need to.
I didn't read the whole thing completely again, I suppose there were some tweaks to it, but.
Okay, also on Friday, May twelfth, at noon, is a DCAT meeting in Dewitt for Mike. Monday, May fifteenth, at one P.M., is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Board meeting in Muscatine or by Zoom, but I think they want that to be in, in person.
Well, for the board, but we, for this one, we can't really do anything, so I'm just gonna listen in.
Okay. Three P.M. that afternoon is a Mental Health and Disability Services Governing Board meeting in Davenport. For NIN and Jack. And at six P.M. that night is a Jackson County. And at six P M that night is a Jackson County Zoning Commission meeting for any of you that want to attend that. Tuesday morning, May sixteenth, um at eight a.m. is the McCook River Watershed Management Authority Water Sampling. Um, if Don wants to go to that, I don't know where it's gonna be, I haven't got information on that yet, but I know that it's an optional, it's not a regular meeting. Which is gonna, I bet it where it is gonna be tight for you to get here if you go to that anyways, so. Our next regular meeting will be at nine a.m. that morning, Tuesday, May sixteenth. That afternoon at one P M will be an Early Childhood Iowa Stakeholders Alliance meeting by Zoom for Nin. At five P M will be Jackson County Conservation Board meeting, which will be starting at the Oakland Mill and uh moving to Prairie Creek for any of you that want to go to that. Six o'clock is Jackson County Economic Alliance for Don. And at seven o'clock that night is Jackson County Board of Health meeting for Nin. I think that is all the business I have for you today.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marty, done.
And any other boards or commission reports uh that you'd like to discuss at this time? Like I said, we had a um special meeting in Fort Dodge for the um ISAC Board of Directors on Thursday last week and um just a regular meeting and discussed the budget, uh approved the budget. Few changes, minor changes, and discussed some of the legislation that either failed or session is over anyway, so. Uh, we had last Wednesday evening, we had a nine one one board meeting, uh which lengthy discussion on radio installation. I didn't call Chad. Didn't get a hold of him, left a message, so I will try again to get a hold of Chad and see what we can come up with. We've, we talked about the installation and some of the exposed um wiring and components of that. Um, they really, uh really like the radios. They said they're working well and it's going well and.
They like everything with the installation.
Yes.
Yeah, and then we had a lengthy work session on fireworks. And it was all good input, I thought. Uh, very good input. So uh at this time, I mean, basically, we cannot regulate consumer fireworks. We ask that people get permits, of course, so that emergency personnel know what they're getting into. Um, I I heard that if one of the fires, either Nashville or Monmouth, wasn't sure which one, maybe both, had some buildings close that were uh storing some fireworks that actually, um, well.
I think it was at present we don't regulate consumer, but the talk about as consumer fireworks get to be a certain dollar amount could be a threshold that will trigger the requirement for that. That's something we have to investigate further and tweak our ordinance to be a little bit more in line with our reality that's around.
Correct, and we had really good input from manufacturers here, from licensed manufacturers, if you will. Um, uh for display fireworks, which you need a pyrotechnic. I said that right? License. And uh really good input. So we're talking about adjusting or changing our application to add, add, add some things and uh so it was all good conversation.
It was a very good conversation.
So we got, we got good input and we also asked for their input to be in an email and or letter, so we have basically a paper trail of activities and conversations as well. Good conversation, I think, yep. Anybody else have anything? If not, we are now joined by Becky Chapin, our Human Resource Administrator. Good morning.
Good morning.
First, before I forget, if you would get with Marty, we talked about the display that gets in front of your office and
Okay.
make arrangements to move that one.
He's not to ask about the R F P, but he didn't.
We did talk about the R F P and hopefully you can help him.
And we talked about all of it, quite basically.
All of them?
Yeah.
Well.
But.
Yeah.
Yes, when we get.
Well, I think at the best field there, I mean, as long as that plaque can go somewhere else, then those could go there then.
Right.
Yeah, I think it would be nice to clean it up. Okay, personnel items. So you have been made aware that our V A director will be retiring. So Tony is retiring his full-time position as our director effective May thirty first. Um, we do have an individual in that department that will be going on maternity leave in June, and he is willing to continue to assist the department as needed. As it will be down to a department of one for first three months of the new administrator taking over. This board actually sets all the pay for the V A positions that are recommended by the commission. Um, the commission, I recommend that we take the salary that he is at now and adjust it down to an hourly rate and just pay him that accordingly. Um, and they will just utilize him only as needed. Um, so he will continue to stay on at least through the three months that will be a short staff person. Um, unless it's not even, unless it's not needed. But as we go through the process of replacing Brianna, um, we think that he is willing to be there. So it is my recommendation, I would ask for a motion to set Tony Shekels as an interim assistant director at the rate of pay of twenty five thirty seven.
That was broke down to what he is as a director now?
Correct.
And he's on a part-time basis and we do have a new director.
So he will be, he will just be like, as needed, just kind of P R and he will stay. Yep.
Make adjustments within the budget because of the way the money falls, this will be okay, because.
Yep, they're gonna, um, they wanna bring Brianna in at ten percent less than what the current salary is set for the position. Um, that way it will help offset that and it will give her about six months to fully develop into the position.
And is Debbie still available?
Um, she is still part-time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we will be looking for a assistant, is that, or what do you want to, what's the title?
So. So the first thing would be is if, or if you're okay with the twenty five thirty seven, I would ask for a motion to set that for the interim assistant director.
So move.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to approve the interim director position as the page stated, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried.
So then the commission did appoint Brianna as the administrator, as she is not a veteran. Um, and they would like to set the salary for the position at less, the board has set the salary at forty six three fifty for this fiscal year. They would like to start the administrator at ten percent less than that. One, to offset the budget to continue to have Tony assist, and two, to give her the six months to develop into the position. So that would actually put the starting salary for her at forty one seven fifteen, which is the ten percent less than currently set. So since this board sets that, I would ask for a motion to set the starting pay for the administrator at forty one thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars, awarding the remaining ten percent increase upon successful six month review by the commission.
Questions?
Do these raises, were, weren't those salaries going up and the new budgets coming?
So those will automatically be adjusted by the parallel resolution when we do that, so this position then would still be a ten percent less than that July first salary until that six months, which will be December.
I'll second that.
Motion and second to approve the Brianna as the administrator at the salary indicated in agreements uh presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Which leaves a vacancy in the C B S O confidential secretary position, which is a thirty hour a week full-time position that she works now and it serves the Veterans Affairs Office eighty percent of that time. So the current rate of pay set for that position is eighteen dollars, which is scheduled to be adjusted to twenty one sixty July first. Um, due to the nature of the position having the requirement of being accredited now, we would like to advertise the position range of eighteen to twenty sixty based on qualifications and then increase the other dollar to the twenty one sixty when they become accredited. It could be as early as six months because there is training and classes available, you have a year by law to get it. So within the first six months to a year, you would anticipate allocating that extra dollar of that salary. So I would ask for a motion to approve the pay range for the C B S O confidential secretary position at eighteen to twenty sixty based on qualification.
So move.
Second, I'm open and second to approve the pay range and are are we approving the um advertisement for the position?
So the commission actually does that, so they'll do that at their meeting tonight.
Okay. All right, to set the pay range as indicated, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Now, is that all that's needed is the thirty hours? You feel that's significant?
Unless it changes with the makeup of the department, um, that we feel like it's been working for that. Um, the little piece of it that we don't know is that it's a secretary of the mental health department as well. They recently did like a needs assessment through the region to determine how much we can allocate of our mental health region funding towards the position, and they determined that was ten percent. If that were to change down the road, it might. Um, Veterans Affairs feels very confident that they can assume more of the position if they need to. And I think as you have heard Tony come in over the few months that you guys have been here, the amount of money that they are able with having three people credited to get the resources to the veterans, that's all money that comes back to our community, even though it's awarded by the state, they're spending it here. So they're doing a very good job of outreach and making sure these claims are being processed and um, but for right now, they think that thirty hours is sufficient. We started it off as a ten or as a twenty hour a week part-time position a couple of years ago when we established it, when we kind of moved everybody over to Ben, over to Penrils and that kind of increased after that, but.
And I've heard good reports about us as far as the veteran administration, almost.
Yeah, I mean, I have too. I'm just wondering if the thirty hours was.
I think maybe once they get set in there and maybe if they need to readjust Brianna, can discuss that and as things evolve with the region. You know, maybe that's a question we had, but we started off with a V A director that was part-time as well, and that transition to a full-time position with our last resignation of the last director, but it does seem like the makeup they have at the department is right now, so.
Well, we got a lot of benefits coming into Jackson County, we sure appreciate that for our veterans and uh hopefully continues.
Yeah. And they actually meet tonight, so then once they're okay with the position, um, we'll get that, you'll see.
As a veteran, I appreciate everything they do, but I hope we get some stability in that office.
And I think this will do that, yeah.
There's a lot of turn.
And the law just requires that we need a twenty hour a week minimum, that's all we're required to provide. We're required to provide just twenty hours and I don't know what the makeup of that is. And obviously, we have changed a lot, that we go way above, and we used to do that, it was fifteen and then it changed. So we had somebody here for fifteen hours a week that was available for them to come in, but they really expanded that department, so they're doing a good job. Next up, our group health insurance renewal. So each year, we are presented with a renewal from our broker, which is Cunningham and Butler out of Dubuque. Um, they provide a renewal to us as well as several other alternate plans where we can look at the deductibles, out-of-pocket expenses in relation to the premium for the plan and all that good stuff. Um, so we kind of look at that here and determine the cost effectiveness between the the premiums they charge for the plans as well as sustain sustainability and making changes to our partial self-funding. So this year, we found it to be cost-effective to renew on the current full insurance plan that we currently purchased. And by doing so, we will pass on a minimal expense to the employees and we will maintain the same benefit out-of-pocket spend expenses to the employees through the partial self-funding. We currently have the Iowa Community Trust Benefit Option Number Eleven, and I would recommend that we renew on that plan. I would ask for a motion to approve the Walmart Insurance Renewal Rates for the I C T Option Eleven as presented and authorize myself to sign the renewal paperwork and required compliance paperwork. So once I tell them that we are, which plan we're going with, they send me all of the follow-up documentation, the Medicare supplements and all. You authorize me and you're late to complete that paperwork.
And if I read that correctly, you, you and Shelley and Lisa uh went over all these numbers and worked and and agrees.
It's a balancing act. We do it every single year. We look at multiple variables. They give us actual real opinions and.
But you're all in agreement.
Yes.
So move.
I will second that.
I have a motion and second to approve the insurance renewal as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Alright.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Motion carried.
You guys have very good.
And it's actually kind of funny because as we get new employees and stuff, we actually hear that people offer better coverages and stuff too, and you know, pre, our group, we're, we're in the, in a trust because it works for our group, because our size is so small, so to rate just us, it's very difficult. So this has been kind of a, it's been a good thing for Jackson County itself. Um, and our vision insurance renewals every two years, so we're in the first of the second, so we'll have that for one more year before that renews and our dental rates will not be changing for the upcoming fiscal year.
Awesome.
Okay, so you'll see all of that stuff come out here, but I mean. That's all I have. Oh, I did mention, um, we did, you did authorize the hiring of the assistant to the engineer last week, and I'm not really sure Todd discussed the rate of pay that he wanted to offer for that position. Um, I did not get with him for this morning. I thought maybe I would finalize that today, but.
He did not.
Okay, so I'll just have here, I do that next week.
He's gone.
Yeah. So he.
Is he back tomorrow or Thursday, I think?
Yeah, yeah, so I'll just get with him before next weekend here, I can, you know, can come in and get that. Or he's gonna start push one second, I can get the data since. We need to hear that next week.
Appreciate it.
So I got.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any other boards or commission reports that are unfinished business that you'd like to bring up for the board?
Motion adjourned.
Second that.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried.